Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's school board meeting, Monday, February 22. All members are in attendance. Please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we begin, could I ask for a motion for a closed session to be held after this evening's study session?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. I'm sorry.
What purpose?
Oh, the purpose is discussion of negotiations. I'm sorry.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. And I see we have some guests with us this evening from Oak Grove Middle School. An invitation to The Lion King. Would you like to take over, Mr. Blessing? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Blessing, and I am the music director of The Lion King. And we're so excited to be presenting the show for you. We brought a group of students with us this evening. And the students have been learning lots of music, lots of great songs, even learning lots of words in Swahili, and Zulu, and Shosa, and the African dialects and languages of the region. And so we're very excited to be presenting the show for you next week.
I'm Sean Stelton, and our performances next week will start on Wednesday with the Senior Citizen Show at 10:00 a.m., and then Thursday evening and Friday evening at 7:00 p.m. And then we'll have two shows on Saturday, one at 3:00 and another one at 7:00. Hope you guys can come on out and see some of the shows. It'd be great.
Hi, I'm Kevin DeHoney, and I did the costumes for The Lion King this year. I've been parent volunteering with Oak Grove for the last couple of years, helping with the plane with doing costumes. And this year, I was solo, doing it on my own. And it's just been a lot of fun working with the kids. They're an amazing group of kids. And we've also had some interest this year from the Tribune. Some of you may have seen the article. And The Sun Current just did an interview, and today, we had Carol Levin here interviewing. So it's a lot of great publicity for the school and for the play. And so we hope to see each and every one of you there.
The musical, we really consider one of the hallmark events here at Oak Grove Middle School. We do seven performances each year for around 3,000 people that come and see it. And so we're always happy to have that interest from the community, to be able to do the free Senior Citizen Show, which pulls in buses and vehicles from all around Bloomington and even around the metro. And then also to be able to do the student shows for the students of Oak Grove Middle
We're all looking forward to it. We all read the articles and look forward to the Carol Levin presentation.
School, but also inviting our fifth graders from Westwood and from Oak Grove Elementary. Yes, that'll be on this Thursday, on Thursday in the morning show. And just feel like it's a really wonderful event for the community. And we're just very excited to be putting on the production next week, so we hope to So we'll have some students sing a little excerpt of one of the pieces, one of the songs see you there.
Could you introduce the students?
from The Lion King.
Or could they introduce themselves?
Students, come on over this way. Yes, come on across. You can see your grade level. Can we start the team? Or we could just go on the circle.
Okay. I'm Carly Thurston.
And Judy Cooper, former Oak Grove Elementary teacher and Bloomington teacher.
I'm in eighth grade.
I am Bella DeHoney, and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Davis Steffensen, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Eva Berglund, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Clara Johnson, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Sophie Nassett, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Maddie Stoff, and I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Marja Wells, and I'm in sixth grade.
We have 72 students in the full cast, and we have another 20 students that make up Our accompanist. the crew, and the tech crew, and backstage, and set crew and things. So really, we involve just about 100 students in this production, and it's entirely student-run. Our goal by the showtime is that students can take the show and be able to showcase their great work and their great talents and things that they've been working hard doing for several months now at this point. So we're very excited. We hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Who's your accompanist?
Judy Cooper. Yes. Yes, and Judy's been with us since the last week of January, so yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it. Good luck.
Go ahead, Mr. Former vice chair. Chair, would you like to move, make a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
Oh, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approval of the agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Thank you. I'm not going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to us. That brings us to Part A of the agenda. Would some like to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Part A is our board business, minutes, personnel, field trips, and finance. So all in favor of Part A, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. That brings us to Part B. And I'd like to invite Dr. Heistad to come to the table, and we're going to talk about statewide longitudinal educational data system and the return on investment research progress report.
Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, and board members, this is a very quick update with no data. It may be my first and only presentation that does not have charts and graphs. But we wanted to give you an update on the research that we're doing now that the state longitudinal educational data are available from the state. We've had these data for approximately nine months, and through that period of time, we've been able to crack the nut of a follow-up study. The, this has been a need for education. You know, in my 25 years in Minneapolis, we were never able to find out reliably what happened to our students after they graduated. But with the SLEDs data now available, we have a complete picture of students who at least go on into either two-year or technical or some kind of certification program. So we wanted to kind of talk about where we've been and where we're going with this SLEDs analysis, and then talk a little bit about return on investment. And that's how we're going to evaluate the effectiveness of our Career Academy and other innovations in the college and career readiness framework. So I just have one slide. The three phases of SLEDs analysis, as I indicated, began about nine months ago. We were able to take the scores that predicted ACT, college readiness, and now look and see whether those students actually did enter a four-year college, enter a two-year college, whether they actually graduated or got a certificate or degree within six years. And we found out that the initial rainbow that had been produced, to use MAPS scores, predicting college readiness, worked just fine. So the scores that we had established for elementary, middle, and high school actually did end up predicting whether a student would go on to a basic four-year college, a select four-year college, or a two-year technical program. We also determined the strong influence of grades in this prediction. It turned out that test scores were not the most powerful predictor of college readiness. That grade point average produced much higher hit rates in terms of success, both entry of college or technical school, and completion. So that we were able to take this information, and John and his team programmed it into the PGP, so the personal growth plans then would have, you know, a clear empirical linkage so that if a student was on track for two-year technical but wanted to get into a four-year college, they could look on the pathway and see what kind of a grade point average would they need to be able to do that, what kind of test scores. And then I found that combining the two test scores and GPA, of course, had a higher prediction than just either of the individual elements. Well, also, we're able to look at our graduates. I started with the class of 2008 and 2009, and see if the graduates from Jefferson and the graduates from Kennedy had about the same outcomes as similar schools in the state. Or, in the case of Kennedy, we saw that they had a higher rate of placement in four-year college and a higher rate of completion after six years. Jefferson was very similar to its comparison schools, and Kennedy had higher rates. And then, most recently, we were able to break this out by demographic groups. So when I do do the presentation with charts and graphs, I will be able to break out those graduation findings by party, racial, ethnic, and language. So then we're at February of this year, and we were very pleased to find out that the MARS data that we, that we're missing from the original SLEDs downloads. So I got the download. It had data, but it didn't have any way to link that data directly to high school performance. So I had to do that kind of by hand and use the test scores and the demographic factors of students to link back to high school. It was 95% successful, but I still missed about 5% of the cases where I'd love to find out which student that had identical test scores and demographics ended up going to a technical school and the other one didn't. But the only way to get complete data was to have MARS information. And the state has it, they just didn't make it available the first time through. Well, then, we got an announcement from them about a month ago that at the end of February, we would have these data available. So now I can go back and not only look at 2008, 2009, but all the way up to 2013, and I can get a complete record of all students. One of the analyses I couldn't do was students getting into select colleges or highly select colleges like Carleton or Stanford, other schools that have very high entrance criteria. Now, if I pool across these eight different years of graduation data, I should be able to do that analysis. And we'll be able then also to get de-identified information from the whole state. So then, I can look at particular groups of graduates and say, if we control for all the demographic characteristics and prior test scores, are we doing better than a similar group at the state level? This is the approach that's going to be taken when we look at the return on investment for college and career academy students. We will find identical groups of students with the same demographic characteristics and the same test scores, and then follow them into the SLEDs data to find out whether they attended two-year or four-year or highly select colleges, and then also, you know, whether they graduated. So that's what we're going to be working on. As soon as I get my hands on that data, I'm closing my door, and I'm not coming out for a while. So then the third is the broader vision, what we're talking about for the next five years. And those of you that are on the legislative committee have already had a kind of a preview. We're talking about the innovation zone. When we met with the commissioner about flexibility on testing, she said, "Not only do I think we should go after flexibility for testing, but I think we should look at flexibility for, you know, funding, and flexibility for looking at different pathways." And so we're not right now, this week, and we're working with Senator Melissa Wickland and with other members of the Senate and the House to see if we can't come up with a bill that would open up the possibilities for doing innovative kinds of work, open up the possibilities of doing other types of assessment at secondary, and then to have it all nested within a research advisory. So the idea with this innovation zone is that we would have researchers from, you know, the specialists at each level of the state bureaucracy, also friends of ours from the University of Minnesota, and colleagues from Search Institute, all come together, and we'd kind of be a team working together on these college and career readiness studies. So the return on investment basically asks, well, what's the benefit after, you know, going through college and career academy compared to identical set of students that didn't go through the academy? And then, look at the cost of the program, and then the savings, not only in terms of salaries of students once they get out into the world of work, but also funds that you don't have to expend for incarceration or for other kinds of state services. So it's a very comprehensive kind of analysis of financial return. Art Rolnik did this with his colleagues on early childhood, and they found out that the return was about, what, $4 for every dollar that was expended? That would be the same kind of analysis that we're going to have. And we have renowned economists, Ray Robertson and Nick Marand, his colleague, doing this analysis. And then finally, you know, what we built into this law is that districts that get the ability to do the innovation zone will use rigorous evaluation techniques like value-added or match sample to be able to identify what's really working. So that's kind of the vision for SLEDs moving forward without overwhelming you with statistics tonight. I just thought we would just update that we're on pathway, we're on our trajectory to have significant new information by the end of this school year. And then, if this law is passed, we would have a period of application to the state to become an innovation zone district, and ultimately, then a five-year plan to do innovative research. So any questions or comments?
One question I did have is, when we say we can predict with a certain amount of certainty where they'll end up, what's the percentage? Is that 75%? 90%?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The test scores by itself give you between 70 and 75% accuracy in predicting whether students will be enrolled in a four-year college. The GPA, grade point average, predicts with it between 80 and 85%, so it's significantly better predictor. And you put the two of them together, and you actually can get up to an 85% hit rate. And you would, what we found was that an ACT test score of 19 predicts getting into a basic college. And we knew, we kind of knew that before from our work with the NWA, but then it was verified that, you know, we take those actual students and see if they have a 19 or higher, and they actually do have a much higher rate of placement in a four-year college. But the grade point average of 2.4 was a much better, I'm sorry, 3.4. So Bloomington has a grade point average that actually goes up over four. It goes up to 4.5 because you get extra credit for advanced courses. And so if you had a 3.4 or higher, that would predict success in getting into college. And then, when I looked at completion, grade point average of 3.5 actually was the kind of, kind of had 80 to 85% certainty that the students would actually complete college within six years. So that's just some of the stats off the top of my head, but I'll have much more available after I've completed these new analyses. It's a strong enough predictor, so it really is something that we can say confidently to parents and students. This is based on real data on students who graduated from, you know, Bloomington a number of years ago, but we kind of think the graduates, you know, are going to have the same kind of success that we saw in 2007, 2008. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your part. That will bring us to number two, which is a bid award, high school outdoor track rehabilitation. Would some like to make that motion?
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts a new look contracting Rogers, Minnesota, bid for high school outdoor track and rehabilitation, and authorizes administration to enter into contract with the above vendor to accomplish this work.
Second. Thank you. Rod Zivkovich is here to discuss this with us.
Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, if you remember, I brought a rejection of bids at our last board meeting for this similar project. We have rebid them. We've gone through the process of awarding it to the lowest bidder in this regard, and we're recommending accepting this bid.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we have some policy reviews. And we'll start with policy 510 activities. Someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 510 activities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to discuss this with us.
Thank you, Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Policy 510 activities update. What I can tell you is that the main updates to the policy are an updated purpose statement. The Board Policy Committee helped with the language to update that, and is really a simplified, easier-to-understand-and-read, I think, version from the Minnesota School Boards Association version. And then, there was some clarification for independent providers, procedures of what they follow to, you know, do things like mountain biking club and things like that in the policy. Otherwise, it is in line with Minnesota School Boards Association model policy, and administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we have some policy reviews. And we'll start with policy 510 activities. Someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 510 activities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby is here to discuss this with us.
Thank you, Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the board. Policy 510 activities update. What I can tell you is that the main updates to the policy are an updated purpose statement. The Board Policy Committee helped with the language to update that, and is really a simplified, easier-to-understand-and-read, I think, version from the Minnesota School Boards Association version. And then, there was some clarification for independent providers, procedures of what they follow to, you know, do things like mountain biking club and things like that in the policy. Otherwise, it is in line with Minnesota School Boards Association model policy, and administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll just say, one of the things that we did change is, part of the original policy had placed these student activities as being secondary to the curriculum, and one of the things that I think we've been moving towards is acknowledging that the total experience of school, all of it is equally as important. And so, instead of making these appear as though they're sort of taking a backseat to what we're doing, it really does enhance the student and school experience.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none? All in favor of revised policy 510? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Takes us to revised policy 515, protection and privacy of student records.
Thank you.
Wait, we'll read the resolution.
Oh, sorry.
I know, we're getting excited.
Be resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 approves the revised policy 515, protection and privacy of student records.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Assistant Superintendent Melby.
Okay. For policy 515, the main updates, and as you can see, if you look at policy 515, it's a page of policy and about 50 pages of regulation that come along with it, and appendix informs. It's a very dense legal policy, and as it needs to be, because it's talking about student privacy and record privacy. But the updates with the purpose and the general statement of policy, that follows updated MSBA, Minnesota School Board Association, language, and I believe it's much more detailed and clear than our previous version of the policy, so I think that's an improvement. I mentioned that it has lengthy regulations to the policy. They've also been updated. And just to note, I think everybody has seen this afternoon, there was an update on those regulations based on some language changes that we made with the Board Policy Committee when they met last time. And finally, I will say that this policy and the regulations that go along with it has a lot of legal references in it. And really, in consultation with our legal counsel, David Holman, we made the decision that those needed to be in the policy because it gets, you get reference from legal statute to legal statute in there. But I would recommend, and if this is a mandatory policy, I would recommend updating it on a yearly basis, just because a law may change, and you'd want to make sure that you update that in the policy. So with that, recommend approval of the policy update.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Maybe just to clarify for the public and the rest of the board, the policy committee meets on these, and when we receive the documents and look at them, it normally would take us a bit of time to go through them all, but so, because of the committee, we had opportunities to look at these ahead of time, and if there was any questions or anything like that, we brought them up at this time. So it's not like that this is just brought to us and we're okay in it, because with my two partners in it, who are certainly checking out all of the words and everything else like that, it worked out really nice.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Anyone else? Hearing none? All in favor of revised policy 515? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Let's go to revised policy 417, chemical use and abuse.
We solved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves revised policy 417, chemical use and abuse.
Thank you. Our Executive Director of Learning Support, Andy Kubis, is here to discuss this.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki. This is revised policy 417, chemical use and abuse. As our Assistant Superintendent said, this policy also went to the subcommittee. This policy is about the education and intervention around the chemical use and abuse.
Hearing none? All in favor of revised policy five-fifteen? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Let's go to revised policy four-seventeen, chemical use and abuse.
Be resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District Two Seventy-One approves revised policy four-seventeen, chemical use and abuse.
Second.
Thank you. Our Executive Director of Learning Support, Andy Kubus, is here to discuss this.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Superintendent Fujitaki, this is policy, revised policy four-seventeen, chemical use and abuse. As our Assistant Superintendent said, this policy also went to the, the subcommittee. This policy is about the education and intervention around the chemical use and abuse. Again, it's an MSBA mandated policy, and there wasn't many changes in this at all, just some of the language changes that we've been doing with policy. Two things that I would draw your attention to. One, we did change naming the director exclusively in this policy to changing it to the superintendent. And then, the superintendent is the one who, who then puts it out to, to the directors. And the only other addition in here is that in the MSBA policy, they defined what use was. But other than that, again, the, the Policy Committee looked at it and recommended no changes others than the, than the things that went in there. Administration recommends that this is good.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for this policy?
As Mr. Kubus had mentioned, that in case you're confused looking at four-seventeen and four-eighteen, because they look like they're the same exact thing, this one really is, as you mentioned, about the education and prevention of chemical abuse where the next one is more in line with, okay, well, what happens if there is abuse at the school? So, just for clarification.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none? All in favor of revised policy four-seventeen? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Brings us to revised policy four-eighteen, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools.
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District Two Seventy-One approves revised policy four-eighteen, drug-free workplace, drug-free school.
Second.
Thank you.
As Director Oliva mentioned, that the, the difference in this policy, whereas four-seventeen is about the education, this is about the maintenance of a healthy environment. And so, again, this is a mandated policy from MSBA. Weren't many changes in this at all. The committee that looked at it didn't offer any changes. The one addition that is in this policy that was, wasn't in the previous is that the MSBA group just put in a definition for what it means for conviction, but that's the only addition in the, in the policy at all.
Okay. Other questions? Director Scharf.
I just would, would remind the group, too, that when we do these policies and we reference or model them after the Minnesota School Board Association, they have quite a staff, legal staff, that goes through all of these and makes sure that they're updated because of the many laws that are changing over time. And then, of course, then we go through it and have our own counsel helping us understand it. So, some of the definitions are, are important, and it seems that definitions almost get changed every year as a, a new interpretation or new understanding of controlled substance, toxic substance use, or alcohol comes onto the scene. So, that's why it's always important for us to do these on an annual basis.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment on this? Hearing none? All in favor of revised policy four-eighteen? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Last policy is revised policy five-twenty-one, student disability non-discrimination.
Be resolved, that the School Board of Independent School District Two Seventy-One approves revised policy five-twenty-one, student disability non-discrimination.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Policy five-twenty-one is to protect students with disabilities from discrimination on the basis of their disability. The way that manifests in the school is through our five-oh-four. Last year, when our Assistant Superintendent Eric Melby was the Executive Director of Student Services, he led a committee that got together to look at our five-oh-four policy, and they did a really, really good job. They enlisted the help of one of the best, I say disability lawyers in the state, in Laura Tubbs Booth, who came to help us. And we have a very, very robust five-oh-four policy that does great things for the students, protecting the students to make sure that, that we're in line with that. Not any changes in this policy. It's in line with the MSBA policy that's recommended.
Any questions or comments?
Just one, if, in case you're wondering why we have so many policies that seem like they're the same regarding discrimination and bullying and harassment and the different kinds of harassment, and why isn't this just included in the other one? This question is asked every time one of these comes up, and it, the answer is pretty much always because there are separate legal definitions for all of these different classifications. And so, we are, we are encouraged to have them be separate, to make sure that we're in compliance with the law and the legal definitions of discrimination and harassment and bullying. So.
Thank you.
Just throwing that out there.
Anyone else have a question or comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just quickly, I want to, Jim had mentioned that the, the Policy Committee goes through these. I just want to acknowledge the work that you're doing along with cabinet and district members. It isn't easy to go through these things, and I appreciate the definition because they do, when I saw the packet, they do look a lot alike, and you could easily sandwich them all together. So, appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and it, it makes our job here that much easier.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, administration does about ninety-nine point nine percent of the work. You have to see that.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none? All in favor of revised policy five-two-one? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to an engagement letter with Green Espel P L L P. Would someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair. Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District Two Seventy-One approves the engagement letter with Green Espel P L L P for legal services regarding landfill litigation, and authorizes Superintendent Les Fujitaki to sign the engagement letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I say a few words?
Sure. For the benefit of public, I'll read the background information on this resolution. Our district received a lawsuit alleging damages from environmental contamination. Our district is one of fifteen defendants named, including the state of Minnesota's, Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the cities of Bloomington, Richfield, and Burnsville, as well as the Burnsville School District. The cities of Bloomington, Richfield, and Burnsville have agreed to share a legal counsel that specializes in environmental law. The cities have also agreed to allow us, our district, to join them in joint representation on this matter. This joint representation could potentially mean that we could reduce our, our district's legal fees by up to seventy-five percent. Our district legal counsel recommends that our district joins this joint representation by having the school board approve and sign the engagement letter.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent? No? Hearing none? All in favor of the engagement letter with Green Espel? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next, I just would like to report on a closed session that we had Monday, February eighth. The School Board Superintendent and members of Cabinet, along with the district's legal counsel, met in closed session on Monday, February eighth for the purpose of discussing negotiation parameters. No school board action was taken or required. Thank you. And that brings us to board member reports.
I can go first.
Thank you.
As you may already know, the Policy Committee met prior to this meeting, not today, but prior. We went over the policies that you saw today, there is one that we are still waiting on for some more revisions. Just an update, the Policy Committee, I, I think we all felt that the second time we met was more efficient, was, it worked better. We're learning as we're going because this is our first time doing this. And so, we, the, I think the difference this time is we didn't dig as deep into the regulations. We stayed at the policies where we should be, and then, the only thing that we did with regulations is if, if when we read it, we didn't understand something, we asked for clarification. So, that, I think, is going well. And then, I also went to last week, the Bloomington-Richfield Parent Advisory Council, Early Childhood Family Education Parent Advisory Council. They had special guests from Minnesota Reading Corps, who spoke about, about what they did with the early childhood. They said that what they do is different than what we have in the grade schools. There were coordinator reports, the, they reported on some business they had, and then talked about some of their upcoming events, is they have a Heggie, is it Heggie or Hedgy? Pizza? I think it's Heggie Pizza fundraiser. February twenty-ninth and March sixteenth, they're having spring movie night on Friday, April eighth, from six to eight PM at Pond. And they're having family photos on Saturday, May twenty-first, nine AM to two PM at Pond. For more information, you can visit their Facebook page. And the next meeting is March tenth at Pond. So, that's what I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Director Burgestrm.
I had the pleasure of attending the Bloomington United for Youth Recognition Awards over at the City Council Chambers. That's always a, a fun evening. It's, it's nice to see that they have, I think it's four categories, where they have different categories where people and, and businesses can be recognized. There was a couple of students that were recognized there. It's always a, a, a nice evening, and, and Madam Chair, you were there, so maybe you have something in your report, too. But I was also at a custodial transportation negotiations meeting. That was a couple of weeks ago. I helped facilitate a, a table conversation at the Future Leaders Conference that was held over at Bloomington-Hilton. Students from Kennedy and Jefferson come there. That's, they do one in the fall, they do one in the spring. This was the spring one. There were twenty tables, I think, this, this time, something like that. And there were three different speakers, and they, and they had three different topics and subjects. And then, there, there are a chance for the students at the tables to get up and change three different times. So, the facilitators don't change, but the students do. So, the, the net result is the same. We get to see some fresh faces. And it's just, it's, it's a lot of fun to see these kids. They come in, in business dress, so some of the boys are wearing bow ties, and they've got, you know, they're, they're dressed real sharp and ready to go. And it's, it's, it's just really, really interesting to hear the conversations at the table. So, they do have these, they'll have another one in the fall, and again, next spring. And I would encourage anyone who's, who's available to, to step in, come on over, try and sit in at a table, just, just listen to what these kids say. The superintendent was there and, and listened in in the morning. It's, it's just really a lot of fun. I was also at the Parent Advisory Council, and I was going to have my notes here to let Rick give his report, so he gave his report. It's always fun to check in with that crew. They're, they're really spirited and energetic, and, and they do a lot of good things over there. I had an opportunity to stop right here at Oak Grove Middle Pool. I apologize, I don't, I don't remember the class that put this together, but they, they put together some boats, and they made them out of recycled cardboard. So, they asked the kids for a while to bring in cardboard and a whole bunch of duct tape. And my wife happens to work at a company that makes duct tape, among other things. And, and we were able to get some duct tape and bring that in. But it was really neat for these kids to understand the mathematics involved with, with displacement. So, if you make your, your boat heavier than the water that it displaces, displaces, it'll sink. So, they had to figure out some math to figure out how these boats worked. And then, they, they had a race from one end to the other, and it was timed. And, and some of the kids were individual, just sat in a little bucket, it looked like. And they paddled away, and other kids had teams where there was four kids in the boat. It was just, it was, it's a panic to see. So, it was really neat to see these kids so active and so involved in, 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 in mathematics. And yet, I don't think they may, may not have understood all the math that was involved in making those boats and making them float. So, and some of the decorations were pretty cool, too.
So, those weren't toy boats? They rode in the boats?
They were not toy boats. They, they took them very seriously. There was somewhere, I think on the district, there will exist a video and some pictures. I took some, maybe a picture or two from my, my cellphone, but I don't know how good they are. Yeah, they, they were in them, and they were, they were having fun. Also had a board meeting for intermediate nine-seventeen last week. We had a legislative update and then moved into a closed session. And the Kennedy Senior Achievement Committee met. I'm, I'm the, the rep on that committee, and, and there's lots and lots of really deserving seniors. And we had to pare that down to a manageable number because the banquet hall can only hold and accommodate so many. Lot of good work, lot of good kids there. And, you know, they all deserve recognition. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Hearing none?
I can go. You have a?
Go ahead.
You have a? Jim?
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, I attended the Labor Management Committee. Besides the, the usual insurance and, and other discussion that goes on there, they also had a discussion about the wellness plans presentations that they had attended and, and had some feedback on, on the plans that were presented. I also attended the Minnesota School Board Association's officer training, primarily around open meeting law, sharing the meeting, and then chance to network with other board members. The, I attended the meeting of the Bloomington-Richfield Community Ed Advisory Council. The presentation there was Metro South programs, and we also watched a video of Bloomington Day that was shooting their video at Kennedy at the Activity Centers showcasing people using their Activity Centers. I attended the, well, the Diversity Committee did not meet. They all attended, I think, most of them were there. The Office of Education Equity had a training, and so, the meeting was changed so that people could attend, attend that training. And that training was on supporting students of color. I also would like to say congratulations to Hillcrest teacher Anne Hansen, who is the early, you know, teacher in the Early Learners Academy. For people that don't know, that is a preschool program at Hillcrest. And she was honored with Excellent Educator's Award from WCCO and was on the news, and they came and surprised her at the school. It was a great honor to have, to have her recognized and the good work that she's doing there. Also, at Hillcrest this week on Wednesday, I think it's at two-thirty, the students, some of the students were performing their Indonesian music and dance that they have been learning from a guest artist in their school. So, they have a performance this week. The, at Washburn, their PTA, they had a PTA Read-A-Thon and Family Engagement Night all, all together, but they had two-hundred-and-forty-six people that attended that night to kick off their Read-A-Thon and their family engagement. And just, I wanted to give a thank you to the staff. They had over twenty staff that showed up and volunteered for Family Engagement Night that evening. And I also attended their pride rally. And, you know, it's great to see the students that get awards because their parents are invited. So, there's always the parents trying to get the picture of their kids, and, and it's just a great event, and the kids are always waving at mom and dad in the back. And it's a very exciting rally to attend. And I, I stayed at Washburn for about three hours on Friday when I was there. And I just want to talk a little bit about the whole, they are, I asked, I think they are doing the PBIS, for those that don't know, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. They are in their seventh year, I think, now of that program. And I was so impressed with the things that I saw around the building. It was also an indoor recess day because of the rain. And so, I saw one group of girls that were having a girls' lunch party because one girl had met her goals. So, I got to sit with them and have lunch with them. And then, I saw another group of students in the gym playing soccer with a staff member because some of those students had met some goals. And I, I just was quite impressed that they were actually walking the walk on PBIS around the building all day, handling indoor recess, and, and it was just a great time there. Very high energy, but it was great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Scharf.
Don, Dick, remind me that sometimes when we're on the board, we deal with policies, you know, and some of that stuff is really tough. And, and then, people see us at the meetings, you know, where we're making decisions. And that's hard. But the really hard part is trying to keep up with all of the school's activities that we have throughout our district and go to all of the concerts, the sporting events, the daytime activities that they have. And that's the hard part. But it is serving lunches and doing some of those things. That's really what, talking to
That's really what, talking about community engagement or school engagement, that board members participate in. I have a couple of reports. I just wanted to call attention to another friend of ours, Minnesota Masonic Home has a, a magazine that they send out to, to benefactors and/or people who have been there many times for various rehabs and so forth. That's why I'm on the list. But in this recent article that talks about engaging high school students, Minnesota Masonic Home partnered with Bloomington Public Schools Career and College Academy to help engage high school students in the health sciences. Numerous specialists from MMH, including Administrator Shelley Wigan, added to the course presentations. The home provided hospital beds and other equipment and offered tours of the MMH campus. Students who complete the Health Science Course work are certified as nursing assistants and ultimately may choose to work for our great care community. So, our BCCA is up and operating and doing really well. And I hear about it in different elements of our community as we go around, that this is a great, another great example of Bloomington schools working for students. My other report has to deal with the yellow, Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee. As many of you know, we have a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee organization here in Bloomington. And that started from the yellow ribbon that everybody used to have tie on, yellow ribbon around the old oak tree. And, and then it got a little bit more significance when we wanted to bring our troops home. But in order to help make that possible, many communities organized a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee organization for support for existing veterans and their families and Armed Forces personnel overseas and wherever they may be, as well as retired veterans. It's an attempt to recognize the fact that the hardships a lot of families go through. And the children in our schools and families throughout our area need some support. It's sometimes really hard for these people to admit that they need help. So, we're trying to do as much as we can to, to interface and publicize the fact that we have a helping community for any support that you need. One of the maybe unfortunate aspects is there's a, within our schools, we might know who some of the families are, but because of certain privacy issues and everything else like that, we can't identify them. So, what we're trying to do is just to make the buildings know that there is a group, and if they want to have some kind of a little get-together or whatever it is, that, that we're here to help. March is the month of the military child, and so there are various celebrations and activities going on throughout the month with various veterans organizations and/or service organizations too. But I just needed to call that to our attention, that we are aware of it, and we're trying to do as much as we can for the many families that have service people on active duty or veterans coming home. Thank you.
Thank you. Down the line, anyone else?
I can go if anybody else is going. Well, as part of a special interesting assignment that I have to do for my master's program, I have to work on an analysis of a curriculum selection process. And I chose to do it with Bloomington schools, of course. I found that to be kind of a great opportunity for me to learn a lot more of how the curriculum process goes in our school district. So, by recommendation of Eric Melby, I, I went and I talked to Jenna Mitchler, who is one of the curriculum instructional specialists. And I just have to tell you that it was really interesting. We had a good conversation for about an hour about how the process starts, you know, how our district administration works together with the amazing group of teachers and members of the community as well, as well as other people who are representing our, our different departments, and how the process takes place. And just looking at it and making an analysis of this process, just understanding, you know, the importance of recognizing the standards and really working or focusing our work in the standards that we have to follow, that are pretty much, you know, mandated by Department of Education too. And the importance of looking at assessment, you know, from that perspective where we are working with our students to help improve their learning and to make academic progress too. Some of the things that we worked about too was the need of looking at the diversity part of this process with a more in-depth kind of focus, you know, really understanding a little bit more about what our students, our diverse students are needing, you know, what, why they are, why they have certain needs, and in which way we can help them more. We talked with Jenna a lot, a lot about the work that we do together with Office of Educational Equity as well, and how this kind of work can improve in the future. And we talked about also a lot about the importance that, we talk about how standards are released every seven years, but now they're gonna start being released every ten years, right? That's my understanding. That's kind of the last information that we got from Minnesota Department of Education. And how in our school district, you know, based on the, in this cycle of the seven years, there is a process that goes more intense, in, in an intense way during the first four years. And then after that, you know, the, the type of work that is done is not as intensive as, is not as intense as those first four years. But then, as Jenna was explaining to me, what our school district is doing now a lot more is really continuing the work without waiting for the next release of standards. And one way of continuing that work is working together with our teachers through the, the work that they do in their PLCs. So, it's that constant, you know, looking and reviewing at the standards and the assessments and looking at data and the importance of data and the importance of our teachers, understanding data and those results, and how to, how to use those in the classroom as well, so that they, we can improve student academic achievement. So, that was one thing that I just wanted to really say, you know, thank you to our administrators for this work that they're doing, that you all are doing. And also, thank you to our teachers for working together in this. This is really hard on everybody, I could just tell. This is a lot of work. And another thing, I had the opportunity also to meet with a group of teachers, all teachers of color. One thing I learned out of that meeting was that less than two percents of our teachers are teachers of color. And we're talking about Minnesota. We're talking about less than two percent. And I just couldn't believe, you know, that the number is so low. And it's just very concerning, you know, as our population of demographics of students of color continues to increase. We still don't get that same number, you know, that number doesn't go up for our student, for our teachers of color. The last thing I would like to share with you is that I was selected by Education Minnesota to be part of a team, a group that will be developing anti-racism curriculum for the schools in Minnesota. So, I've been working on that, I don't know for how long, but I'll be starting that work next week. So, I'm pretty excited about that, just trying to do something different.
Anyone else?
That's all.
I just, I just wanted to make sure to encourage all staff in the district to attend or buy a ticket to the BFT's dinner, I guess, and dance it is, their, their social this Saturday night. And that the money provides scholarships for all of our seniors. So, hopefully all staff will go and have a good time. Some of us attended last year. It was a great time. So, hopefully, we'll see you all there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Great, thank you. I have four topics. First, the School Board Legislative Forum will be held on Thursday, February twenty-fifth, six to seven-thirty PM, here at the Educational Service Center in the Harleen Bush Boardroom. All of our Bloomington legislators have indicated they're gonna attend. The public is welcome. Again, it's this Thursday, six to seven-thirty PM. Second topic is tomorrow morning, a meeting with newly-elected Representative Chad Anderson. The third topic is the Joint City Council School Board Meeting that was scheduled for February twenty-ninth is proposed to be rescheduled to March thirty-first at seven PM here at the Educational Service Center in the Harleen Bush Boardroom. So, administration requests a motion to establish this new Joint City Council School Board Meeting. Again, March thirty-first, seven PM.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All in favor of the joint meeting with the city on March thirty-first? It's, I'm sorry?
Is that Thursday?
Yeah.
I believe so. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Final topic is a school board retreat is scheduled for Thursday, March tenth, at six PM at the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce offices. That concludes my report.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
No.
That's all set. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other business to come before the school board this evening? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.